Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, April 27th, 2022 Franklin Board of Education meeting. We're going to start out tonight a little different than we normally do with the ceremonial oaths of office for myself and Debbie Larson. So, we are, but we're going to do it after, after we're seated.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. Yes, all right, here we go. Just think you can go out there.
How about the background?
Are we using the background?
Oh, we're using the background.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well.
Stand off, you will do the oath.
All these families. All right, you ready?
Yep.
Do you, Michael Sprague, having been appointed to the Office of School Board Member, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I will.
Um, oh, sorry. We all have to get used, how to use the backdrop.
There's a strategy involved in the background. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Debbie Larson, having been appointed to the Office of School Board Member, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations. Good job.
And your family, don't they?
We think.
We think. We hope.
All right, thank you. And now for, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Dr. Beer.
Present.
Dr. Khan.
Present.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
We are all here.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. We have to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so on the second meeting in April every year, we have the board reorganization. So, we will have the election of board officers tonight, starting with President. I'm sorry. Thank you. Can we, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. All right, now we can get to the election of board officers. Thank you, Linda. So, there, this is the only time that secret ballots are allowed by law for school boards. So, we have the ballot, you have the ballots in front of you. The, so we'll be, I'll be asking for nominations for President, then Vice, then whoever's President will take over the meeting, and then Vice President, Treasurer, and Clerk. Nominations don't need a second, and if, if there's no objection, if there's only one nomination for an office, we can do it by voice vote unless somebody wants. All right, great. If everybody has a black pen, that would be great in, for the ballots. So, I'm looking for nominations for President.
I nominate Mike Sprague.
I would like to nominate Angie Beer. And the reason I want to do that is because I thought about, you know, what the board would look like and what we have ahead of us, what we might need going forward, and I, I think that really it's going to be about change. There's a lot of change going on as a board. It would be good to have change also on the board level, so. Angie, you've done, you've done a great job of, I think you have experience with leading meetings. I like the way you communicate with constituents, so I, I think you'd be, I'd like to nominate you for President.
All right.
I appreciate your kind words, but I respectfully decline the nomination.
Are there any other nominations for, are there any nominations for President? Are there any other nominations for the President Office? Are there any other nominations for President? So, nominations, as I understand it, can, are they, can they be declined?
Yes.
They can be. Okay. So, we'll have a voice vote for the Office of President. All in favor of Mike Sprague? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. I'm looking for nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I would nominate Angie Beer.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice President?
I would nominate Linda Witkowski.
Thank you. Are there any nomination, are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Are there any other nominations? All right, thank you. So, your green ballot is for Vice President, so please choose, please choose one, and Lisa will pick up the ballots.
Three votes Angela Beer. One vote Linda Witkowski. Four votes Angela Beer. Two votes Linda Witkowski. Five votes Angela Beer.
All right, thank you. Dr. Beer is the new Vice President. We will move next meeting. Okay, I'm looking for nominations for the Office of Treasurer. I would like to nominate Alan Alexandrovich for the Office of Treasurer. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Linda Witkowski for the Office of Treasurer.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? All right, the yellow ballots are for Treasurer.
One vote Alan Alexandrovich. Two votes Alan Alexandrovich. One vote Linda Witkowski. Two votes Linda Witkowski. Four votes Alan Alexandrovich. Three votes Linda Witkowski.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alexandrovich is the Treasurer. I'm looking for nominations for the Office of Clerk. I'd like to nominate Debbie Larson for the Office of Clerk. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Seeing none, all in favor, Debbie Larson for Clerk.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Our community comment, participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parent, excuse me, or parents, guardians of Franklin Public School District students, must state for their record their full name and address, and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. The community comment is related to an agenda item. The board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per board policy, Administrative Rules 8300. Sarah Wheeler, please.
I sit here?
Please.
Okay. I'm Sarah Wheeler. I'm a Franklin resident of almost 14 years. I live at 4848 West Sheeran Lane. I have three children in the school district. Evelyn's in eighth grade, Benjamin is in ninth grade, and Gabriel is graduating shortly. He's in 12th grade. I am a band mom, and I am here first to thank you all for the support of the music program. It's been a really rough pandemic, particularly for music, and I so appreciate the support as one of the participants from Umps who spearheaded the new trailer campaign, which is in the works and will be finished shortly and delivered within just a short while, a couple of months, maybe even a couple of weeks. So, thank you for that. We're super excited, and we want to keep this thing rolling. And so, we thank you also for your ongoing support of the music program. As I said, the pandemic hit band particularly hard. Band, you have to blow into an instrument, and that caused unique problems for the pandemic. Because of that, students did not have the opportunity to perform, which is the pinnacle of that academic experience, is performance. And can I just tell you from my own experience and from my own children what that means? My eighth grade girl, and if you're familiar with eighth grade girls, self-confidence is not a high mark in general for 13-year-old girls. It's a really tough time, and when I watched her march off that field, the first time she performed with the entire marching band, she was beaming, and she said, "That felt great, and I felt so confident." She was nervous beyond belief to do it, and she did it, and it was quite an accomplishment. And I put her on the spot because I think everybody can relate to a 13-year-old girl's level of social anxiety and what self-confidence means, and what music can do beyond what any other academic program can do, is provide a child with that level of emotional support, opportunity for success, that carries beyond that subject and carries on for the rest of their life. And so, because we know going into this that the pandemic hurt our numbers in terms of enrollment because the kids didn't have the fun things to do, and so, learning about music without performing music is a dud. We know it's coming back with all of these wonderful opportunities we've had this year in band to perform in public. They're going to, the middle school is going to perform at the Milkman game, they've been at the Admirals game, they went to Madison with the football team, we're a part of every community spirit event, the Fourth of July Parade, the Gold Walk at the high school, music is involved. We need to invest in our music programs, and I implore you to take that under consideration as you're making budget. I see that's coming up in future agenda, that you take that into consideration as you make decisions about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. That was incredible, you did exactly three minutes.
She was probably practicing.
Mary's been launched.
Mary, yank, please.
A little bit of a repeat, but I have two thank yous and two requests. Thank you to the board and to Ms. Domeress and to everybody else who has done such a diligent, thorough, conscientious job of selecting the new superintendent. I know personally from some of you that this has been, you know, physically draining, mentally, you know, taxing, and it's just, we're so grateful for all of the work that you all have put in to find a new superintendent, because this is one of the most important things you'll do, obviously, and I feel entirely confident that you are going to pick somebody that, that is just going to lead us into the, into the future. And I just want to say thank you because it's, I'm sure, and it's not over yet, I know, but it's just been, been such a pleasure to, you know, to be part of that and to know that you guys are doing just such a fantastic job. My request, which is a little out of left field, I was here a couple months ago when they had this forum for parents to come and talk about the superintendent, and one of the dads said, "This room," you know, which I know is multipurpose, "you would never be able to tell that it's Franklin," other than this thing, which is new, you know, and I'm just wondering if there might be an opportunity, you know, for a mural or some pictures or something to just indicate that we're Sabres or we're, what's one of the other schools, Wildcats or what have you. I, I just think to be representative and have all of the superintendent nominees come through here, and, and this just doesn't reflect, I think, some of the spirit that, that I'd like to see, and so, I don't know, it's, if it's something that's within the budget or just something somebody could spearhead, I, I just think this room begs for, for something, some color and some, some student input. The second thank you is, as Sarah said, for your support of the music program, in particular the marching band trailer. That contribution was just stunning. I think a lot of us felt just completely overwhelmed with, with gratitude and how that contribute, how big that contribution was. I hope that when it is delivered, there, there will be tears, so, but if you could all come, we'll let you know when it's delivered, because I think it, it benefits you to see kind of where that money went to and how proud all these kids are going to be when that, when that trailer rolls out. Like I said, there'll be a few tears. But, as Sarah also alluded to, my second request is for continued funding, continued staffing of the music programming. I think if we're going to attract, you know, the superintendents and, and be a district, not, I mean, the kids, yes, absolutely, but if we're going to be a district that is, is, you know, attracting good teachers, attracting good staff, attracting families, we need to have music be an integral, integral part of that, and to cut staffing or to cut programming would be a huge disservice to the kids as well as to the district and its, its reputation.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, you're welcome.
All right, that's all for community comment. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item number eight, school board announcements. Are there any announcements by school board members? All right, thank you. School board calendar, there's a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00, and also Wednesday, May 25th at 6:00 at the ECC. District administrative update. Dr. Miller, please.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. This week is After-School Professionals Week, and I'm proud to recognize the employees who work with our students before and after school, who are dedicated to ensuring that our kids start their day well and end their day well. So, we're really proud of the people who, who do that work for our district. Next week, we're celebrating Staff Appreciation Week. We continue to be also very proud of our staff, and throughout the week, we'll be recognizing them. On Sunday, May 1st, it's National Principals Day, so we're going to give them the day off. Yeah, always May 1st, so. Our leadership team is continuing to plan our reunification simulation, which will be held on May 19th. A small group of students and parents from Countrydale will help simulate this, and we'll be studying our protocols and learning from this experience and expanding that simulation and opportunity next year. I can't say enough about how the police and fire have been supportive in partnering with us. They'll be present that day, and I think it's just a really important event for our school district. I'm pleased to share that next week, we'll be announcing our new Student and Family Assistance Program. I'd like to thank Ms. Cody for her leadership with her team in bringing that to our school district. We'll be sending that information out to our families next week, and those resources will be made available them, to them immediately and throughout the summer. So, that is going to be a really wonderful addition for our district. And then, just a couple of reminders, some upcoming events, the Franklin Educational Foundation and Eco Club Shoe Drive is Saturday and Sunday, April 30th and May 1st, from 11:00 to 1:00, so get your shoes together, drop them off at the high school. And then, please don't forget about our Culture Fest on May 19th. That will be held at the high school. So, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Item 11, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Approval of change to self-funded dental plan. Mr. Millsor, please.
We talked about it at the last meeting, but just to review, we're currently fully insured with United Healthcare Dental, and we got bids on that, and they came in low for self-funding with Delta Dental for a 5% decrease, about $22,000 savings for next year, and although we kind of agreed in principle, we needed to vote on that, so it came back to this meeting, and we just need a motion to go self-funded with Delta Dental.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to move dental to self-funded with Delta Dental as recommended by the administration.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, appointment of CISA 1 Annual Convention Delegate and CISA 1 Board of Control Member. So, as you probably know, I am the CISA 1 Board of Control Member for Franklin. It's actually, it's actually Franklin's seat, not mine, and I would, I would like to, I would like to remain the CISA 1 Board of Control Member. There will be an election. We are up for election this year, that, that board seat is up for election this year. The convention is May 15th. So, I would like to be the delegate, but we can certainly discuss it if anybody else wants to be. So, I'd be looking for a motion to, to name me the CISA 1 Board of Control Member and Convention Delegate.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. 2223 Board Retreat Scheduling. So, Dr. Miller and I have talked about this a little bit, and she has, she has created a document of the things we have had, that we have discussed on retreats over the past several years. So, normally, we have a retreat in the summer. It's been July a few times, and generally in August. I wonder if we want to have it in August or, or maybe a little bit later this year because there's going to be a new superintendent starting July 1st. So, I think we should, I think we should discuss when we're going to have it. We'll discuss topics, we'll discuss topics later.
Is there any value in having it prior to the beginning of the school year? Do we need to keep that date in our mind as we're scheduling? I'm honestly asking, I don't.
I think the only, I think the only, the only reason would be because once the school year starts, we're kind of busy.
That's true.
And the administration's kind of busy.
And there's usually goal setting as part of that.
And goal setting is part of it.
August tends to get pretty busy for administrators, too, so.
I think let's push it for September, at least give the new superintendent an opportunity to get the feet wet, because as soon as you have a full retreat.
I would agree with that. Dr. Mill, what do you think?
It's fine. September is, I would say, less busy than, well, it's a different kind of busy. I think we keep, you go through all the months, and they're a different kind of busy.
Of course.
So, I would say people can make September work.
I think you'll have a good sense of what the coherence plan is by then, and then the new superintendent may have some new ideas about beyond the goal setting, what development might, what book might this, this board like to read based on their experiences or, or what's, what, what development they could bring to the table to help you achieve your strategies. So, I, I think it's a little bit wise to, to work with the superintendent, as I've worked with you on your retreats, to kind of align those. So, I would agree that waiting till September would be a good time to do your retreat. Years, years ago, you just did one, and then the last couple of years, you've actually had a couple of retreats, so the board can talk about that as well. Do we want to have a retreat in September and then do something else in February? So, that discussion is currently scheduled for June, for you to talk about, you know, that, but the actual topics themselves and what you do, I think would best occur in September. So, I concur.
All right, so I think, I think September it is, and I think maybe we, maybe we send around a doodle to see what dates are available in September. They'll probably be more available now than they will be closer to the time, and then we'll discuss it further in June.
Or a doodle.
All right, thank you, everyone. Any further discussion on that? Thank you. SWSA Updates. Ms. Witkowski and Dr. Miller, please.
Okay, we, there is a document included in the agenda that kind of, it's an ongoing summary of what we talked about before, and there was another SWSA board meeting back in April, and we did hear from Milwaukee Public School Foundation leader, John Kersey, and he has been part of the effort to, again, organize businesses around a common goal of the funding issue that we have facing us. It was interesting hearing his perspective. We don't usually hear anything from Milwaukee. It's like they're a black hole, so it was, he had an interesting story. And his message really was to kind of get this, get to his one voice of what, what we need from Madison, which revolves around the, the business letter that we all, we talked about and we have signed on to, but the idea is also to get more businesses involved. I know, Judy, you've made an effort to, to do that with the Alliance.
Right, we're, we're working on that. We continue to, to reach out and see if they'd like to sign on the letter that the board recently signed, but just, just beyond signing that letter, it's talking about what the needs are in the school district and what, what the consequences are of not funding K-12 education. It has to, like, impact them, right? So, we have to have conversations about what will happen if we don't prepare students for the work world, you know, and we need funding to do that. So, I think we have to do more of that.
And there is actually a recognition breakfast coming up with our alliance. I'm not sure whether there's a presentation that could be made or some.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a celebration, so you don't want to make it too political, but it is an opportunity to have individual conversations versus a kind of presentation. Yeah.
Okay, then, I think I also shared with you the, how many, there's going to be a lot of turnover at the state level, so it will be quite an interesting election cycle, I think. Also, today, the Marquette Law School poll was released. Do you see that in your emails? I'm not sure if everybody gets the same thing, but they did release their poll, and schools are one of the top, you know, priorities of the issues that we expect to hear about in the next election cycle, but for the most part, people are happy with public schools. I will share the, the link so that you can look through that. There are a number of very specific questions on education that you may want to follow up on.
I also spoke with, I had lunch with Senator Bradley today, and we, we discussed a lot of what we're discussing now, what we've just discussed now, but also, I, I told Senator Bradley that we have wanted to meet probably quarterly with him and whoever replaces Representative Skoronsky, and at least me and the new superintendent and, and likely Linda, and, you know, whoever wants to come, but have, have an open dialogue. You know, we talked a little bit about, we talked a little bit about budget and funding public schools, and that's on, that's on Senator Bradley's list as well. And, and we also, he also thanked Dr. Miller for being so proactive in working with him, and he said, you know, "I, I didn't really know what to expect," and I asked other, he asked. we also, he also thanked Dr. Miller for being so proactive in working with him, and he said, "You know, I, I didn't really know what to expect." And I asked other, he asked his colleagues what to expect, and they said, "You're probably going to have to go search him out." And Dr. Miller searched him out. And, you know, I, I think that's, we appreciate that, and I'm glad that we've decided to do that as a board, to get more involved. So, you know, we're on the road to getting more involved, and I think that was one of our goals a couple of years ago. So, thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you, Linda, for doing that, because you've really done a lot. You've really done a lot to, to get that started.
Sorry. I, no, I echo your sentiments, and I'm just thinking, is there any, should we be trying to have regular meetings with any of our city government as well? Is this something that we've tried in the past and?
Yes, we have tried in the past. We've tried adopting older men and meet with them. We did that, Debbie, right?
Adopting an older man, okay.
Or paired up with one and said, "Go talk to them." But, yeah, I think, I wish we could be more on the same page there. We do have our, definitely have our connections with the police department and the health department, but it doesn't seem to carry over into a.
Meetings were never successful. Not to say that we couldn't try again, but they were never successful. You think it was for lack of an agenda or just lack of common ground?
Lack of com, you do very different business. You do very, very different business than the city. So, putting you together, there isn't a lot of common ground. The work that you do, so. But I would say, you know, the mayor's been very good to work with. We've had lunch with him. He reaches out, and so, I think the relationship is good. It's just we have very different work.
Okay.
I was going to mention that Senator Bradley gifted us with the pen that the governor used to sign our Senate bill that was passed into law. So, that was a nice little token. It was nice of him to give you. Thank you.
It was nice. He gave me one as well, so I didn't bring mine for show and tell.
I also want to mention that I came across a couple of articles that I thought would be of value to the board. One was on how parent involvement has changed, and also one was on budget concerns. Would you mind if I, I thought I would share them with you? They're.
Please.
Please.
And as background, because, again, you want to be thinking about these things. We don't know how things are going to come, how they're going to play out, so it'd be good to be prepared.
I was also thinking about if we attend the Sabre Business Alliance recognition event, if there are a few sort of key talking points that you would like us to have, that I would appreciate that.
Okay, I think we, some of these.
Yeah, I think we can, we can talk about those, too.
Great.
I'm planning to go. I don't know who else is planning to go.
I'm signed up.
It's in my calendar. I just don't remember.
Is it?
I'll, I'll be going.
It is May 26th.
7:30 in the morning at The Rock, at the Performance Center at The Rock.
I will be there as well. So, we can discuss that offline before then. All right, thank you. Treasures Report is available in the Board Docs library if anybody cares to look at it. Item 12, School Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have any Board Liaison Reports? I know we've been kind of busy.
I do. Just from a community perspective, we are signed up for the Fourth of July Parade, so I hope you're all making plans and have your red, white, and blue outfits picked out or something, but we will be in the parade. There's been a lot of talk about the parade. There's lots of exciting things. I think I saw the sausages are coming and, like, just different new, I think that, I think in general, a parade seems to be trying to, like, bring in some new stuff, so it could be very exciting. I believe our bands will be there, hopefully with the new trailer as well, so it'd be very exciting that way. And then Franklin Education Foundation, our meeting is actually on Friday, so, but just to remind you, as you mentioned, the shoe drive this weekend and the golf outing on June 17th, if you haven't signed up yet. And then, the scholarships. We had a really great interest in our scholarships this year. I want to say it was 25 students overall for the different scholarships. So, those will be announced at Senior Honors Night on May 18th. But that's some of the things that the foundation is up to.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, School and Community Engagement Reports.
I serve on the board of Forte Theater Company, which is a partner theater group with our school district. We have a close relationship, and they are putting on Little Women right now currently. It's, it's being hosted at Martin Luther High School. Hopefully, in the future, their shows will be at the Sabre Center. But if you're looking for something to do this weekend, it's a very good show with really excellent vocal performances by local professional actors.
Thank you.
I, I did meet with Mr. Nelson yesterday at Robinwood for kind of an update on Robinwood's plan. And I think I talked about the last time we had our meeting, how they were doing some real intense work around math and bringing in, in terms of their improvement goals and trying to, you know, close those gaps and things, bringing in some very specific teaching strategies in small groups in math and kind of then growing that. And his update yesterday was that that was so successful with math that they have started doing that with their literacy program as well, and really breaking down the standards and finding very specific skills that they can be working on in small groups, and then that is translating into the larger group. And the teachers feel really supported with that work, and so, that was, that was a nice thing. And then also, that focus, I know I talked about last time, too, that focus on celebrating even small things in the building and kind of focusing on those positives. And he said that has really improved. I forget the exact numbers, but their, like, staff engagement scores were significant.
14 points, I think.
Okay, not 14. I know it's a significant increase in their engagement scores from some of those different projects that they've been working on. So, it's, Robinwood is a, a good place. There are lots of things, lots of busy classrooms. We walked around and, like, everyone was busy doing, it wasn't just, like, everybody's quiet reading. It was a very busy day somehow yesterday, it seemed like, so. So, that was my school report. And then, I sort of attended prom. They have the parents, you know, because I had a student at prom, parents can go in and watch the grand march. I didn't realize exactly, that's not, I didn't grow up with that. So, that was quite an experience. It was very fun. I don't know who was on the weather committee for prom, but the only nice day we've had in the last, like, six months was Saturday, and it was gorgeous. It was down at Discovery World, the entire, like, everyone who was at prom was down along the lakefront, just lots of, it's, I hope you weren't trying to ride a bike along the lake on Saturday, because you weren't getting through down by the art museum. But it was really fun, and the kids had a great time. I heard the food was very good, the dancing was good. It was, it was very fun. And I know the kids were really just, like, grateful to have a true prom experience. And then, lastly, I'll just say, although we were busy with things last night, as I was driving home, I logged on to the elementary concert, Countrydale Elementary Concert was last night, so I did the livestream and watched kind of the tail end. I saw some third grade and then fifth grade concert, and it was really fun to see little kids on the big stage at the Sabre Center. I wish I had been there in person, but this week is a little busy for us that way. But it was nice that we have that technology that anybody could be able to watch, so I'm really grateful for that, so.
There's one more concert tomorrow night. I can't remember what school is. I think it's, it's on my calendar.
Ben Franklin is tonight, so.
There's one tomorrow, too, though.
All of the elementary schools.
Yeah, we've done, tomorrow night was the only night I could meet.
Those are viewers toward the end of the year.
But, yeah, I was just going to say, it was Robinwood, then Countrydale, Ben Franklin, South, yeah, South of Glen is tomorrow night, so. If you're interested, you can get a ticket online, and it's, it's free.
I do remember driving downtown on Saturday night, right by the, and what was going on? It looked like weddings, but you're right, or just.
Is that, were you, did you see it? There are lots of bright colors and.
Beautiful night and.
It was gorgeous.
By the art center, and, yeah. So, now I know what was going on.
It was frankly, you should have stopped by. You could have gotten your pictures.
Yes, maybe.
School board representative.
They would love that. I had to struggle to get my own kid to take a picture of me. I'm not sure I could have convinced her to take one.
Didn't know I could have done that.
Could have. Next year, we'll make it a date.
I, I went to one of the proms once, and I could actually get in, but it was like I was invisible. Like, there was, like, nobody gave me eye contact. They were like, "What are you doing here?"
Did you ever gown on?
No.
You don't dress the part. So, anyway, good stuff.
All right, anybody else? School and Community Engagement Reports. Item 13, School Board Meeting Debriefing. Any school board member comments?
I just want to comment that I'm super excited for the Student and Family Assistance Program to roll out. That's really great work, and I think, I'm hoping it really helps people who need it.
You know, as you mentioned that, I, it also includes employees. I apologize if I didn't make that clear. It also includes employees. It's a great program.
Anyone else? All right, Future Agenda Items. HOC Presentation, 2022-23 Preliminary Budget Assumptions, Youth Mental Health Report, Ben Franklin Elementary School Presentation, Technology Update, Tobacco Poster Winner Presentation. I voted on that last week, I think. I don't know if anybody else did.
I did, I did, yeah.
Communications Plan Update and Friends of Franklin Recognition. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at 6:40.